I'd like to call to order the Richland Two School Board April 9th School Board Meeting. May I have a motion for us to convene an executive session?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to convene an executive session for the discussion of receipt of legal advice regarding student matters, legal matters regarding ongoing and pending litigation, contractual matters regarding energy management, student appeals, and student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. If you would, please. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Now it's time for a discussion. If you would, cast your vote. Oh, okay. So Theresa, these not good for far distance. That's only good for close. I realize that because I put them up here and I can't see a thing. Yeah. Well, I know. I see that. By motion of six zero, we'll convene an executive session. Welcome to the April 9th, 2019 School Board Meeting. I would like to conduct the meeting in the absence of our Chair, Mrs. Mackey, and we're going to get started with inspirational moment. Dr. Caushus Parker.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, may I have a moment of personal privilege to read a statement provided by our Chair?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good afternoon and good evening to all of you. I have a statement that was prepared by our Chairman, Amelia Mackey, in her absence, and I would like to read it for you in public. The statement goes like this. "Greetings to my fellow Richland Two family, parents, and community members. I apologize for my absence at tonight's School Board Meeting. As a Board Member and particular Chair, I take our meetings very seriously, and I'm thankful to have been healthy enough to have only missed one in my five years on the Board due to death in a family. I'm missing tonight's meeting to support one of my children. I pray that fellow parents will understand and ask consideration and pardon from all others. I wish you a pleasant, productive meeting. I have no doubt that the focus will remain on the myriad accomplishments of our students and faculty and the initiatives, decisions, and policies that provide for conducive and productive learning environment for success. I'm thankful to and appreciate Dr. Davis and the Board for and the premier executive staff and all the folks in the room tonight who work tirelessly together to provide information, presentation, data ahead of time to ensure that our meetings flow as productively as possible. May God bless you all lots and lots and lots. Most respectfully, Amelia Mackey." Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And also, before we get started, I want to thank Dr. Holmes because I had to borrow her glasses for tonight's meeting. And with the glasses, I can see close up, but everybody's a blur. So please forgive me when you see me taking them on and off. But Dr. Holmes, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to use your glasses tonight. And I did see Tanya Rodriguez come in, so she's going to introduce the speaker for us tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I almost feel like you were waiting on me to show up. Okay. Okay, so this evening, we have Jesus Ronaldo, who was born and grew up in Spain. He developed a love for books as tools of learning and as an open road for his imagination. He graduated in psychology in his 40s and decided to move to the United States as a career as an educator in South Carolina. Now and then, he enjoys writing poetry and short fiction and experiencing new places with the loving company of his wife and their four-legged child, Chomsky. Lolli Molina Munoz is a Spanish teacher here in Columbia who is pursuing her PhD in comparative literature. Her poetry has appeared in different Spanish publications across our state and is also in Label Me Latin and the Jasper Project Magazine. In 2019, she has published an essay on gender and sex identity in feminist science fiction as part of an anthology in Spain. Both will read you a poem now.
Good evening, everyone. Last month, I attended the first Bilingualism Matters Conference precisely right here in Richland Two. By the way, congratulations for the great job that you did. I was really honored to be in the first one. And I thought to myself, wow, what an amazing world this one we live in, that here I am, a Spanish teacher from Spain, listening to an Italian professor that works for an Scottish university, speaking about bilingualism here in South Carolina, the United States. Is there anything more global than this moment? And there I was, with my broken English, as a dear friend described my way of speaking. Building bridges, always building, bridges between our two worlds, sharing my culture and learning from yours. Wondering if speaking is anything else but communication, if what makes us human is something bigger than any state or any nation. How important is to make the connection, to realize that the more formal we speak, the closer our languages meet. So I decided to choose some words, specific, definite, practical, concrete, and play with them back and forth. They were synonymous words in both English and Spanish. Synonymous in Spanish, synonymous. If, for example, we think of something specific, in Spanish, we say específico. If we think of something definite, in Spanish, it is definido. If we think of something particular, in Spanish, we say particular. If, for example, por ejemplo, we think of something concrete, in Spanish, it is concreto. If we speak with an accent, it's because we have acento. And speaking of which, of an accent, now comes Lolli Molina and her poem, "I Have An Accent." Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good night. Good evening. I wrote a poem that is called "I Have An Accent" because in many situations of my life, that's what I hear the most, here. It doesn't matter what I say. So always someone says, "You have an accent." And being both foreign Spain, we value how important it was to learn a foreign language to be able to be here, like, for example, to be here today. I wouldn't have thought when I was in school that I could be like 40-something years later here, reading a poem in English, like even writing in English. That's something that I couldn't have thought about it. So we are here to prove how important bilingual education is for the kids and how big it's for them and how many things they can do in the future if they learn another language. My poem is "I Have An Accent." I have an accent. When I go to the grocery store and they ask me if I found everything I needed, and I answer, yes, they say, "You have an accent." This accent is my grandmother's sewing for the rich and waiting for my grandfather to return from Venezuela. When I order a tall-de-calf coffee with milk and I spell my name, they say, "You have an accent." This accent is my mother's cleaning houses so I could fly abroad and improve my English. When I read a poem and your face is changed trying to understand what I say, and you think, "She has an accent." This accent is their brother hands delivering the fruit that I will plate in your still-empty basket. Thank you.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the world in which this stands, one nation under God, in which we will live with dignity and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that warm and friendly inspirational moment with an accent. Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the current agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the current agenda for tonight's meeting of April 9th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caushen Parker. Are there any questions or discussion? If not at this time, if we can go ahead and make a selection. By a motion of six to zero, it carries unanimously. Now, I'd like to move to special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, we have Ms. Libby Roof coming forward this evening to share with us special recognitions. Ms. Roof.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the top accomplishments of our employees and students. I also want to thank parents, students, staff, and community members for coming out tonight to help us celebrate. While Mother Nature might be a little confused on what season it is, we know in Richland Two, it's springtime, because when it's springtime, we certainly blossom with our recognitions and awards. We are blessed with accomplishments to celebrate all year long, but the promise of sunny days seems to help our students and staff really shine when it comes to sharing their gifts and talents on the state and national levels. So let's begin with some more All-Stars. We met some of our basketball All-Stars at the last meeting. Tonight, we want to recognize our other senior basketball players chosen for the All-Star team. Let's meet our South Carolina All-Stars, which includes Trey Jackson from Blythewood High School, and Trey would come forward with Principal Matt Sherman, Athletic Director Barry Mazel, and Coach Washington and Dr. Holmes. This is the part I always forget. I get so excited about sharing the news. We're gonna have multiples come up with them. Also, we want to bring up Taylor Britt and Taylor Lewis from Spring Valley with Principal Jeff Timoney and Coach Megan Assi, and Malia Lockett from Westwood High with your Principal, Dr. Cheryl Guy, and Athletic Director Jason Powell, and Coach Greg Baldrick, if he is here. These players, along with Malcolm Wilson, who we recognized at our last Board Meeting, were named the South Carolina All-Stars and were invited to play in the annual Girls and Boys Game between the All-Stars from North Carolina and South Carolina. The games were played last month in Wilmington. Trey Jackson broke the all-time scoring record with 38 points and eight three-pointers and led the team to 129-117 victory over North Carolina. He plays guard and is signed with Iowa State, where he will play next year, and he brought home the MVP trophy from the game. Our girls battled hard but came up a little short against North Carolina's All-Stars, but that's okay because we're extremely proud of them. Taylor Britt led the South Carolina team with 21 points and will play for Air Taylor Lewis plays guard and is going to be at Middle Tennessee State next year, and Malia Lockett is the captain for Westwood. Taylor Lewis, I could not be with us tonight as correctness. Malia is the captain for the Westwood Girls Team, and she will play at UNC Asheville. So congratulations to all of you. Now, since you're seniors, I want to say a special thank you because you've represented your schools and our district very well, and we wish you all the best for continued success in the classroom as well as on the court. Let's congratulate them again. All right, y'all don't move because you got lots of cameras behind. Now, we're going to meet our North-South All-Star players and coaches. This is player Aleah Kelly, and also, we want to bring up Coach Terrence Gibson from Ridgeview High School with their Principal, Dr. Brenda McFoxworth. From Spring Valley, we have players Destiny Coleman, she's here. Ashley Williamson cannot be attend, so Coach Assi will come back up front, along with Principal Jeff Timoney. And Coach Perry Dozier was going to try to make it. He had a conflict and couldn't make the schedules work out, so Mr. Timoney will get his certificate as well. Also, we asked Russell Jones to come up here with fellow All-Stars, along, again, with Dr. Guy, got it right this time, and AD, Jason Powell.
Libby, excuse me.
Yes.
I have to embarrass you.
I was going to. I knew that.
This is my nephew. I told him I was going to embarrass him when he got up.
Now, Russell, I was going to try and help you out and make the announcement before she did that, so that's not in my script, just FYI. So the North-South All-Star Game was played on March 16th at Lexington High School. Our own Coach Gibson was the head coach for the North Team. Aleah and Destiny put forth a valiant effort in their last high school basketball game. Ashley was unable to play due to an official visit to Sienna College in upstate New York, where she will play next year. Next basketball season, we'll find Destiny playing for Wingate College, and Aleah is still considering, or have you made up your mind, Aleah?
We're still considering. We'll find out later on.
That's good. Take your time. Wait to the buzzer. Wait to the buzzer. Russell Jones from Westwood helped lead his North Team to 121-105 victory. He has had a banner year his last year as a Westwood, being named a co-4A Player of the Year, and he's going to play for Winthrop next year.
(Laughter.)
And of course, our own Coach Dozier, it couldn't be. He helped lead his team to victory as well. So congratulations, and again, thank you for what you've done, for your time here in Richland Two, and all the best. Y'all are welcome to stand up. I've asked Mr. Powell and Dr. Guy to stay up front because we have two more sports awards. Westwood High, for the third year in a row, was awarded the Award of Excellence for exemplary display of sportmanship, ethics, and integrity, given each year by the South Carolina High School League. How many years have y'all been open, Cheryl?
Seven.
Seven.
Fourth time in one.
Fourth. Fourth in five years. Quite a legacy. Quite a legacy. It's awarded for displaying good sportsmanship throughout the year, participating in numerous community service projects, including litter-free week events, and of course, being a great host to your opposing teams. Coach Powell says his coaches instill good sportsmanship in their athletes and have high expectations when it comes to performing community service. Coach Powell, I think it also, you instill that in your coaches, and that's why you were named the 4A Athletic Director of the Year by the South Carolina Athletic Administrators Association. This is decided by the 4A President and the Board Members. The award comes after he was named the Region III 4A Athletic Director of the Year, which fellow athletic directors decide. In his six years as AD, he has served as the Chair of the Bracket Committee and has gained a fine reputation as a great leader to his coaches and students. Congratulations, Westwood and Coach Powell.
The thing that they're saying about Jason Powell is true. I hired him as a first-year teacher in 1993, a long time ago, when I was Principal at Forest Lake, and it was his first job working with our students, and he's just outstanding and has proven that over and over again. Congratulations.
Now, I would like to ask Mary Paige Boyce, who's our District's Director of College and Career Initiatives in our Teaching and Learning Department, to come forward, along with her supervisor, Chief Instructional Officer Nancy Gregory. You coming, Mary Paige? Okay. Ms. Boyce has been named the 2019 South Carolina Career and Technical Education, or CAE, Administrator of the Year by the South Carolina Association of School Administrators. Now, that is quite a mouthful, and it's also quite an honor. And it's recognition of all the great work that Ms. Boyce does in preparing our students for life after high school. She was selected by a panel of her peers for her vision and leadership in career and technical education, not only here in Richland Two but at the state level. In her eight years working in career and technology education, the CAE Program and the choices for our students have grown tremendously. The Youth Apprenticeship Program, R2I2, and multiple health science offerings in every high school are just some of the newer ways the district is preparing our students for the workforce or to continue their education in their chosen field. Career and technology classes are more available and more appealing to all students, thanks to Ms. Boyce's leaderships. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Now, I would like to invite Cheryl Cheatham and her Principal Tamla Ashford from Dent Middle to please come forward. Ms. Cheatham is the Mythology and Latin Teacher at Dent, and she has been named the new Chair of the National Mythology Exam, which is part of the Excellence Through Classics, a standing committee of the American Classical League. Since 1989, the exam has been offered to students in elementary, intermediate, and middle school grades, 3 through 9. The National Mythology Exam is consistently given to over 9,000 students, wow, in approximately 400 schools around the United States, and you're the Chair. Wow, in several foreign countries. Ms. Cheatham and her committee will compose the questions, verify their answers, and keep up with mythology, reading, and research. That is quite an honor and a lot of stuff that you must know. Congratulations. Next up is Blythewood High School Theater Director Sandra Deedle. Ms. Deedle here, along with, we'll bring up her principal to help us recognize her again, Mr. Sherman. We've had her students at multiple Board Meetings. They win state competitions all the time, and they won recently for repeat winners at the South Carolina Theater Association's Festival. Much of that is due to the leadership of their teacher, Ms. Deedle, who won the 2018 Outstanding Theater Educator Award from the South Carolina Theater Association. This is given through the K-12 kindergarten through 12th grade theater educator, college or university professor, or teaching artist judged to have done the most at their level for theater students in South Carolina. That is pretty amazing, the most for your students. If you've ever seen one of her students' performance, you know that there's no doubt she has done the most. Congratulations, Ms. Deedle. Tonight for the arts, and we're going to continue with Martha Kelly Hearn. Unfortunately, we have tried and tried to get Ms. Hearn in a Board Meeting, but she's got such a busy schedule, so we've asked her Principal, Dr. McFoxworth, to come up and accept her award. Ms. Hearn was awarded the 2018 Deborah Smith Hoffman Outstanding Mentor/Teacher Award by the South Carolina Theater Association. These are not short titles tonight. This award is given, again, to kindergarten through 12th grade teacher, theater educator judged to have contributed the most to rising new and even experienced theater educators in South Carolina. When she's not at Ridgeview, Ms. Hearn is the Education Coordinator at Trustus Theater, obviously, very busy, and leads professional development workshops for both theater educators and non-art teachers. She works with teachers on their lesson plans and curriculum development. She will be honored in Greenville in May. Dr. McFoxworth, please tell her we are extremely proud of her for doing the most for her students. And finally, tonight, we have a big award for our district to recognize, and we have our music, some of our music teachers, and of course, our Fine Arts Coordinator, Dr. Wendy Campbell, if you'll come on up, along with District Lead Music Teachers Lisa Rayner from Pontiac Elementary, Quintus Reiten, and Kristen Claiborne from Blythewood High, Philip Pagel from Ridgeview, and Michelle Ortiz from Muller Road Middle. And they are here because they are the music lead teachers for their levels, and they, along with all the music educators in Richland Two, helped our district receive a designation as Best Communities for Music Education from the National Association of Music Merchants. The award is based on data, including how funds are allocated for the arts, how many students are enrolled in music classes, how many music teachers a district has, how many certified music teachers have advanced degrees. The designation shows an outstanding commitment to music education. Thank you to all of you and to your fellow music teachers for doing a premier job in developing the talents of students and making this one of the best communities for music education. Congratulations.
Dr. Davis and Madam Chair and Board Members, if you don't mind, I'd like to add one more recognition to our night of recognition. Ms. Roof, would you please come forward, and Dr. Davis, will you come around as well? You see, Libby's in charge of all of this, and this would never happen unless we took the reins away from her for a few minutes. So we want to announce and congratulate Libby on being named the 2019 Communicator of the Year by the South Carolina Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association. We're all gonna cry here. Libby has been in this position, as we know, for five years, and over the course of that time, she is, stay with her, stay with her. She is on a first-name basis with every one of our families in our school district. They just know her simply as Libby, and recognize her in stores, and, oh, you're the one that calls me on Sunday night. Under Libby's guidance, Richland Two has developed a mobile app, and that helps our parents communicate and learn things with a cutting-edge device that helps them stay engaged with their individual schools and with the district. Under Libby's leadership, we have also launched a brand-oriented, fully-accessible website to communicate Richland Two's news and events, and those received an Award of Excellence from South Carolina Inspras as well. Libby created the two talks with Dr. Davis. Libby created the two talks with Dr. Davis so that they could have a talk show where they discuss various topics that are of interest to folks in the district. So, that was not there before she came along. She works hard to develop strong relationships with reporters and editors at news stations and newspapers across the Midlands. She's earned the respect of colleagues, and we're proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for canceling school, Libby. You get off.
At this time, we will continue with the school focus. Dr. Davis.
My apologies, I'm still in training. Thank you, I skipped over something. Let's go to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda? Remember, I am wearing these glasses tonight.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Zagostini?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the April 9, 2019, meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? If not, we cast our vote. By a motion six to zero, approval of consent agenda carries. Now, the school focus, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have the April School Focus. It's Langford Elementary School. Principal Cassina Jackson and students will share the school's strategies for success in addition to how they develop the talents and provide support for their students. Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Dr. Davis, members of Cabinet, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, community members, guests, and friends. I am Cassina Jackson, of course, the proud Principal of Langford Elementary, home of the Labradors, and on behalf of Langford Elementary, I want to thank you all for having us here tonight to showcase our school in tonight's school focus. At this time, I will turn it over to some very special guests.
Hello, my name is Michael Smith, and I am a fourth-grade student at Langford Elementary. Early pause for great effort. We want to thank you for having us at Richland Two's School Board Meeting. At Langford, we have a theme for each school year. For the 2018 and 2019 school year, our theme is "You Are Here for a Reason." We would like to share a few things that makes us labs an important part of Langford Elementary. I hope you enjoy it.
Hi, my name is Akaya Townsend, and I am in fourth grade at Langford Elementary. I'm here to tell you about what makes Langford special. One thing that I enjoy is the book bingo that my teacher does where it encourages students to read more. Another thing I like to do is chorus with Miss Hips because it makes my singing voice stronger. Langford is a special school because you never know what you expect. One second you're in class, and the next you're having a celebration. Langford is also special because it has a wonderful staff and teachers. There are many surprises in Langford, so be prepared. What makes Langford special is the students. Without the students, Langford Elementary would not be a school, and this is what makes Langford special.
Hello, my name is Joseph Jacob, and I am, and I will be telling you about the arts and science at Langford Elementary. Our teachers incorporate engaging lessons that allow us to have fun while we are learning. One thing that my class is working on right now is a Fortnite math project. We are doing this to learn more in math like number sense, geometry, measurement, and algebraic thinking. This year, we had an in-school CSI investigation field study where we were able to learn about different types of data using clues and how to test blood types. Our teachers use things that we are interested in outside of school to make the learning just for us.
My name is Kaylee Santana, and I am a fifth grader at Langford Elementary. Langford has a wide variety of methods for identifying and building talent in all of their students. For example, on Fridays, students in grades three through five get to choose a club which focuses on an area they are interested in. If you like to paint or draw, you would likely choose the art club. Or if you just like to stay active and have a love for sports, physical education would be your choice. We have many clubs that build critical thinking and problem-solving skills, such as the chess club and a run-hard club that focuses on a variety of life skills and physical fitnesses. There is also a course for singers that want to share their voice, which I enjoy, and so many more. Langford Elementary provides many options and different outlets to have, to help students pave a path into their future passion and even their future career.
Hello, my name is Eugenia Bustamante, and I will be telling you how Langford supports our students. Teachers support each child like he or she is their own. What I mean by supporting is the teacher takes the time to get to know each child's strengths and interests. They make school fun for us. They provide activities that promote awareness and acceptance for all kids, including autism awareness, military families, and community service learning projects. Teachers have to provide a mind-ending experience that taught manners and etiquette. Our monthly family nights included rock painting, net at the museum, parent universities, and last but not least, family game night.
Again, my name is Michael Smith, and I thank you for letting us share a few things that makes Langford Elementary special. I hope you liked the short video we put together for you.
When you come to Langford Elementary, you will experience it from the staff, the administrative staff, and the teachers. You see the passion in their approach, in their actions, and in their behaviors. And I truly believe that to be successful in life, you must have a love for learning. So, really, Langford Elementary spends a lot of time investing in the whole child and really, really shows that they care about more than just the academic side, but the social development as well. Those are some of the things I really enjoy about Langford Elementary.
I just want to take a moment and thank all of my wonderful assistants here. They did give me a minor speaking part at the beginning, but that was it. But I do want to say that everything that you heard tonight, the video and everything, they wrote their own scripts. They put together this video by themselves with a little support, but it is all their work. So, let's please give our students a round of applause.
I would just like to say, thank you, Langford Elementary. You guys did an awesome job. But I also want to say thank you to the parents, because we know that you are the child's first teacher, so we appreciate everything that you guys do, and it does take a village, so thank you. Are there any other comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you, have a great evening.
We welcome the community feedback, suggestions, and comments. At this time, please refrain from using any school names or faculty and staff. You will have three minutes to speak, and when you approach the podium, please turn the light on, and you will have three minutes to speak. Share your first and last name with us. I will start in the order in which it was given to me, and if I mess up your name, please forgive me in advance. Sterling McLean Hasenger. Hasenger, thank you.
My name is Sterling McLean Hasenger. I'm a 12th grade student at Blythewood High School. I and several other students in Richland Two strongly believe that the dress code imposed on the student body is discriminatory. Richland School District Two policy, JICA, states that students are expected to dress, be groomed, and otherwise conduct themselves in such a way as to not distract or cause disruption in the educational program or orderly operation of the school. Furthermore, the dress code, as published in our school's handbook, states that any items deemed distracting, revealing, overly suggestive, or otherwise disruptive will not be permitted. My question is, who is being distracted by leggings and crop tops? From what I have deduced from the language and application of the dress code, it's men. This conclusion leads to some troubling implications. Not only are women being rendered as objects to distract and attract men, but men are also depicted as entities who aren't capable of self-control. A boy is made to pull up his pants in the hallway when he's caught sagging just for them to fall back down in the next few steps. But if a girl is caught with a skirt that's an inch too short, it's an issue that requires her to be sent home. Ignoring the implications made by this language, though, the notion that students and teachers are not responsible for their ability to teach and learn because of a student's dress is irresponsible. I fail to see why an exposed shoulder is considered so revealing and suggestive that it prevents learning from happening in the classroom. I'd even propose that it is the very act of dress coding a student that is a true distraction from learning. If students are being asked to follow a dress code at our school, I think it's only fair that students have a say in what that dress code should be. So, what's the next step? I'd like to urge the school board to review dress code with not only its administrators, but also with the children that are requested to follow it. I trust that every decision made is in the best interest of the student and that our concerns will be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Cameron Jenkins.
My name is Cameron Jenkins. I am a 12th grader at Blythewood High School, and I speak on behalf of the student body in regards to dress code. I believe that dress code is outdated and no longer is considered relevant, especially in the changing times with the changing in fashion trends and the change in, um, fashion trends and certain people's financial statuses. Also, dress code has, the current dress code, based off its language, has implications that regards cultural stigmas, such as the issue with durags or hair picks. Some say that it would, say that people are in gangs, which does not necessarily translate. Also, that, based off of what I understand from dress code, someone that is of shorter height or of different arm length can have a same pair of shorts or top, and it would affect someone else differently. Being distracted by, being called out by dress code is waste more time than actual, the actual process. You sit there, your teacher will call you out in class, and that's more distracting than someone taking you aside and doing it more discreetly. Also, I believe that the current dress code we have is not preparing our students for their next step in their career, which would be the real world. Not all careers require a strict dress code, and for that, I believe that we need to change it, review it, or make it more acceptable, make it so that way students don't feel as conformed with our dress code. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We don't respond, but I just want to say to you young ladies, thank you for having a voice. It starts at your age, so thank you very much. We're going to move down to nine legislative update. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to the most recent legislative update, the Senate Finance Committee has voted out the budget. A lot of it tracks the House bill. There are some variations between them, but it goes now to the Senate floor. Debate starts on Monday, April 15, where, of course, it could be, there could be some amendments that could affect the final bill, and then, of course, they have to compromise the bills, the two bills. So, that is what's going on at this time, and in the interest of time, just wanted to also say that several members of our board, along with board members across the state, will convene on tomorrow and have conversations with members of the General Assembly in an effort, under the auspices of the South Carolina School Board Association, just to share our thoughts with them and also maybe get some insight from them as well, not only on budget, but on the education reform bill and other matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. We will now move to voting on student appeals. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad.
With regard to student number one and student number three, those will be pullouts. But for student number two, I move that they attend Blythewood Academy with the Radac Services for the remainder of the school year.
Is there a second for the motion that was made?
Madam Chair, it's going to be a block.
You're doing block, okay.
Yes, ma'am. With regard to student number four, deny the appeal. Student number five, refer the student back to the school, to the home school for appropriate action. And student number six, deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and a second. Mr. Shad, if you can just check the board to make sure it's correct before we cast our votes, please. Do we need to do a hand vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting for the call. I was waiting for the call of the, I'm sorry.
Dr. Holmes, I think they're waiting for your vote. Dr. Holmes, I think they're waiting for your vote. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion passed six to zero. Mr. Shad?
Thank you. With regard to student number one, I move that they return to school with strict probation for the remainder of the school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and a second. Are there any discussions? If not, will you cast your vote, please? Dr. Holmes? No, she wanted to know who was the second, who seconded the vote. The motion fails four to two. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that for student number one, they attend Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and a second. If you would, cast your votes. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The motion carries five to one. Mr. Shad?
Madam Chair, with regard to student number three, I move that we return them to school with strict probation for the remainder of the school year and with loss of bus privileges.
The motion has been made. Is there a second? The motion has been made and there's a second. Is there any discussion? If not, if you would, cast your vote, please. The motion fails four to two. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad?
I move that for student number three, that they attend Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
There's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and second. If you would, any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. By a motion of five to one, the motion carries. Thank you. Now 10.2, is there a motion for student admission requests into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad?
I move that we approve the student admission request for student number one into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, if you would, cast your vote. By a vote of six to zero, the motion passes. Thank you. Oh, business action requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, on March 26th, we presented the following policies, GBEB, GCOA, GDJ, and GCK as proposals. This is the second reading, and we're asking for a recommendation, we're asking for approval or a motion to approve policies, GBEB, GCOA, GDJ, and GCK. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Manning?
I make the recommendation that we approve GBEB, GCOA, GDJ, and GCK as recommended by the district.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Vote of six to zero, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we're at new business action requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, we have Mr. Will Anderson to come before you to share information regarding meal price change and seeking an approval of the administration's recommendation for a motion to approve the meal price changes for 2019, 2020. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. Thanks, Dr. Davis. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. I wanted to quickly go over the meal rate proposals for next year. Tony?
Do you have?
Thanks. Just real quickly, some background information. As you all know, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA, implements the National School Lunch Program that we are a part of. This is, this program is implemented by the Southland Department of Education. So all policies, funding, everything funnels to the Department of Education. The USDA provides reimbursement rates for the free and reduced paid meals. So they determine those rates based on a variety of factors, the CPI increase and et cetera. So they determine those rates that we get back from the federal government that's passed through the Southland Department of Ed. Per the USAD guidelines and their policies and law, lunch prices for full-paid children must cover the total cost of the meals. So what we charge our full-paid children must be able to cover those charge, those costs of the meals. The Southland Department of Education provides a paid lunch equity tool that allows our finance office and our, and our finance staff to determine what we should charge paid students based on our CPI and our, our information here in Columbia, South Carolina. One thing that we cannot do based on the law is we cannot raise, even though if we may be off in that equity, we cannot raise student lunch prices more than 10 cents a year. Here's information, our current meal rates for our student breakfast, where they stand, the reimbursements that we get from the federal government, and the third, fourth column is the cost to the district, what we pay, the cost for, for those meals, and where the difference stands right now of where we're losing money, for example, in our lunch account. These are some, these are some examples of some neighboring districts where their meal rates are. And these are, once again, all for paid students. You can see Richland 1 and Lexington 4, they do not because they're a community-eligible provision district where they, every student will student eats for free. And we've had that discussion before. But you can see where those meal prices fall in comparison to Richland 2 and then where those communities are pupils in poverty. These are our proposed meal rates for the 1920 school year. You can see those in the bold in the middle, raising 25 cents for student breakfast and then raising 11% for our adult breakfast, doing our cap of 10 cents for elementary and our secondary student lunch, and then raising our adult prices. Just for comparison sakes, currently, based on the, the price equity tool that I mentioned, we should be charging our elementary students $2.83 a meal, and we should be charging our middle school and high school students $2.98 a meal. With that, we, our recommendation is for you all to approve the proposed meal rates for the 2019, 2020 school year. Thank you.
Is there any discussion, Madam Vice Chair?
When was the last time we increased, had an increase in price?
Mrs. Agostini, remember, I'm in training. I made a mistake.
Thank you.
I should have asked for a motion first and a second before the discussion. See, I'm a fast learner. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there a motion to approve the proposed meal rates?
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the meal rates for the 2019, 2020 school year as recommended by district administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion and properly second. Now, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you. I was following along with you. I was ready for the discussion. When was the last time we've had an increase in our student lunch price?
We have not increased meals in two years.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Holmes? The adult price, I see there's a difference of a dollar and 10 cents from, I believe it's a dollar and 10 from last year to what you're proposing. Is that, no?
It's 25 cents for lunch and 25 for breakfast for adults.
Dr. Holmes, do you need your glasses back? Teamwork, teamwork. Okay, probably so, okay, yeah. All right, I thought I saw something different. That's okay. Yeah. And I would just like to make a comment. Although I'm going to support this, I would still like for us to have an opportunity to go back to see how we can make sure that all of our students are able to have free lunch where they don't have to pay anything. So I'd love to see if we can just still go back and find a way that our students don't have to pay anything.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad?
Mr. Anderson, as I read this, we are still, because of the difference in terms of the federal reimbursement, we're still losing money, quote unquote, just not as much if this is approved, correct?
Yes, sir. That's still, that is correct. And as a reminder, we are in a, currently in a process of selecting a new food service provider. And so hopefully, we can negotiate the cost to the district in this new, whatever, whoever we select to reduce those costs we're paying as well. So hopefully, we can, our food service account is supposed to be an enterprise fund. It's supposed to be able to self-supporting and support itself. And it has been bleeding a little bit, but we're still in the black on that, as you will see from your, the most recent CAFR from last year. But yes, sir. So it still does not make up the gap, correct?
And I know for some families, for some children, this may be the only meal. We know that. This may be the only meal that they have at school. We know that.
Sure, yes, sir.
In terms of access to food, the district still maintains with fidelity that no child will go hungry when they come into our doors.
Our, our policy hasn't changed. We still, we're at, as pupils in poverty, 55%. For free, all free kids eat, all reduced kids eat. And we, you know, if children do not qualify, we're, we still work with them. Not to say that we do have paid students who have debt for a variety of reasons, but we, we don't leave them hungry. And of course, we work with our, our other, our, our social workers and our food pantry to make sure that we do all we can. And so, yes, sir, that's a long answer to your question. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, let's cast our vote, please. By a vote of six to zero, it passed unanimously. Let's move to 12.2, approval for the 2019, 2020 board meeting schedule. Dr. Davis?
Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, you have before you in your documentation a copy of the board meeting schedule for 1920. We're asking for a motion to approve the 1920 board meeting schedule.
I'm a fast learner. Is there a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 board meeting schedule?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Shad?
I move that we approve the board meeting schedule for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Are there any discussions? If not, please cast your vote. By vote of six, zero, the motion carries. 13, new business, no action requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, you should have received previously to this board meeting the proposed policies for your review. The policies as listed would be policy GA, personnel goals slash priority objectives, policy revisions to GBA, open hiring, equal employment, opportunity affirmative action, policy revisions, GBA, sexual discrimination and harassment, policy revisions, GBB, staff involvement and decision-making, policy revisions, GBC, staff compensations, and policy revisions, GBEBC, gifts to and solicitation by staff, policy revisions, GBE, staff rights and responsibilities, and policy revisions, JRA, student records. We have our chief human resource officer here to answer any questions as relates to your review of those policies.
Yes, and if we can take one policy at a time, do we have any discussion on policy GA?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
Under the bullet points, it says to provide staff compensation and benefit programs sufficient to attract and retain highly qualified employees. While I don't have a suggestion for alternative language, I just want to point out, it concerns me as premier district that we're going to provide adequate compensation and benefits, yet we expect to retain highly qualified employees.
So, Mrs. Agostini, do you have a suggestion?
I said I don't have a suggestion. I just, you know, it troubles me that we're wanting, that we're doing the adequate, but yet we're expecting the most. There's got to be some type of balance there if we want to be premier.
Dr. Davis, would you like to respond to that, please?
If I'm not mistaken, this is the language from the School Board Association?
Yes, sir, it is. It's the recommended language from the School Board Association. Is that something that you guys can go back and revisit and maybe change the language? Since we do have the autonomy to do that?
We could take a review of the language. I am a little myth about whether or not it should be adequate or sufficient. We'll come up with some sort of terminology, if that's the will of the board. Is there any other, any other suggestions from any of the board members in relation to that language?
Is that the will of the board?
I, I, I'd like to know something I've been meaning to ask this for quite some time. When we make suggestions about these policies, about what we want to change and do, isn't it, don't we all need to agree on it? Don't we need to take it to a vote?
Yes.
Instead, we just change it based on one person's suggestion?
Well, not a vote, but it has to be the will of the board.
The entire board.
Right.
Okay.
So that's what I'm asking. Is there a will?
No, it's not my will, so.
Any other feedback from board members?
Not on this particular, specific issue, but also on this policy, I have another concern, where I do have a suggestion.
Okay, it's not the will of the board to make those suggestions. Mrs. Agostini, your next point?
Okay, it's the second to the last bullet point that says to develop a climate necessary to obtain to obtain maximum staff performance and a high level of morale and job satisfaction. Instead of necessary to obtain, I thought something more along the lines which encourages maximum staff performance and a high level of morale and job satisfaction.
Is that the will of the board to make that suggestion? Mrs. Agostini, do you mind repeating that again, please?
I'll read it with the change. To develop a climate which encourages maximum staff performance and a high level of morale and job satisfaction.
Any comments from board members?
I'll support that change.
Any others?
Madam Chair.
And I'll support it as well. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shad.
Just a question from Mrs. Agostini. What do you see as the difference between the two?
I'm looking for encouraging and positive, positive words versus necessary, like it's a requirement, that it's necessary to do that, it's something that we're working toward.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. I think although I, we welcome those changes as administration, because it is the will of this board of how your, how the school board policy should read, just as a point of, of, of information, if the changes are changing the content, the changes should be, changes that are changing the content of the policy. If it's grammatical, or if it's words that are, I guess, more warm and fuzzy, or a little more direct, the question when we're looking at policies or policy revision is whether or not it changes the content of the policy, or if it makes a meaningful change to it, would be those, would be those things that we would want to address. As we continue to move forward, as you got, as you all have noticed, we have several policy revisions that we're going to have to get through before the end of this school year and start of the next school year. And so we're really looking from directions from the, from the board on content for changes that change the content of a policy.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any other comments from any other board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shad.
Just based on what Mrs. Agostini has said, I'm inclined respectfully to disagree. In fact, I think by saying that it is necessary, as it currently is written, that, that make, I know it's a goal and it's objective, but it actually makes it mandatory for the district to develop that climate as opposed to developing a climate, I think as she said, to encourage. You may just encourage, but you may not necessarily get that type of climate, but if you make it necessary that they develop this climate, I think that puts more teeth behind it, and it puts the onus on the district to ensure that that occurs, rather than just encourage the rest of that clause.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
And I can appreciate Mr. Shad's explanation, but it is my understanding, as a board member, it's the board's responsibility to actually write the policies, whether we want to change the content or the grammar, however it's written, that is our responsibility.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other comments? If not, because it's, it's not the majority, it's not the will of the board, so we will keep it as it stands. Thank you. And we'll move to the next policy, which is policy GBE. Are there any questions, comments? Okay, these glasses are working. It says GBA.
Yeah.
And I said GBE. They are working, Dr. Holmes. Policy GBA. Any questions, comments? If not, we'll move right along. Policy GBA, any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
For policy GBB, in the middle of it, where it says personnel participation and decision making may include items listed below, as they are appropriate to areas, programs, schools, and offices, I'd like to suggest that we add curriculum in with the others that are included.
Suggestion has been made. Any other comments from any other board members?
Could you repeat that, please, Mrs. Agostini? Where it's got the bullet points, personnel participation and decision making may include listed items below, as they are appropriate to areas, programs, schools, and offices. It has policy development, administrative rules, development, budget planning, facilities planning, strategic planning, and I would like to see curriculum included in there as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other suggestions or comments?
Would that, Madam?
Yes, Dr. Caution Parker?
Would that fall, would that fall under curriculum, under, a, a different policy, another policy? I believe it's included in another policy. Yeah, I think it's included in another policy. The curriculum part, Mrs. Agostini.
Could you cite that policy, please?
No, I can't cite it because I don't know, right off the top of my head.
So then I would ask that we consider including it in there.
Okay. Okay, what is the will of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair.
The policy is staff involvement in decision making, just so everybody here knows what we're talking about, and encouraging all staff to be included in, in the decision making process.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other suggestions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shad.
I wouldn't know, I don't know if I necessarily disagree with Mrs. Agostini, but I would note that the paragraph under those bullet points, the last sentence speaks about all proposals for changes to curriculum, and that, as I read it, that tells me those proposals are coming from staff, so there would be participation by the staff with regard to curriculum in this new change, this proposed change.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Any other comments? Okay, the policy would stay as is. Policy GBC. Are there any questions or comments? And I know, I mentioned before, if there is any way that we can actually show the policies, and I know someone mentioned before that we can go ahead of time and see that, but as I look around, I see folks trying to go through their phone, it would be so nice if we could just have those policies posted up there, so when we do have folks that's taking time from their very busy schedule and such a long day, that they don't have to take the time to do that, that we can just post it up as we go. So I would love for the board to consider and support that.
Madam Chair, I agree with you, especially since you have my glasses tonight.
What's the will of the board? Dr. Caution Parker?
As someone who's over policies for 16 years, it's, it's very time consuming, and I think that we're dragging our feet when we have to go through every single one, and even if we put it up on the, or, I think it's very time consuming. One thing that we got this evening, a notebook here that we received from the administrative staff with the proposed policies in there, the changes and whatever, I think as long as the content, the heart of the policy is not being changed, we need to kind of move forward because we're getting bogged down in a lot of things. And I do know that it was a suggestion before, when I first got on the board, that any, because Mrs. Mackey and Mrs. Agostini were our grammar checkers, they corrected all of that for us, and it was to the point where they submitted that information to, I don't know if it was you or Roosevelt, it must have been you, beforehand, before the board meeting, as the grammar changes and things like that, as long as the content of the, of the policy did not change. But I do think, and, and, and we change policies all the time, and finally, when I started giving it to them en masse, and they had to really go through all of that, we kind of changed the process, and the decision was made, as long as the intent of the policy and the content of what we're focusing on did not change, that we need to move forward with making the changes and submitting changes like what we're suggesting this evening to the attention of Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Caution, Dr. Caution Parker, but I think I was referencing placing the policy up there, so when we're saying bullet number two, or the first paragraph, that folks that's sitting out there will be able to see what we're talking about. They have no idea, no clue when we say the second paragraph. So if we could, but it's also the will of the board.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Manning.
I'll offer my notebook for anybody in the crowd that wants to read the policies.
Their own employees.
That's okay. I'll still put it up there if somebody wants it, they can come, that way they can see them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning.
Yeah.
Will of the board, anyone else? Okay, that fails, we will continue. Policy GBEBC.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shad.
Back to GBC.
Yes.
Staff compensation.
Mr. Shad, okay.
The third paragraph.
They have no clue what you're talking about, Mr. Shad, when you say third paragraph.
Um.
If you don't mind sharing it with the folks that's out and the people that may review it later, who don't have time to go and pull up the policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Under the third paragraph, which reads, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the, and then it has board, which is struck through, and then it's replaced by district. Please help me understand, if the district is awarding the contracts, then why is there a recommendation by the superintendent?
In tonight's packet, you had the ratification of personnel.
Right.
So the board has to ratify the personnel, so the board approves that, and the district, i.e. HR, will prepare the contracts to prepare, to send out to professional staff.
So it's a recommendation by the superintendent, then ratified by the board?
Yes, sir.
And then the district awards? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So then the fourth paragraph, right under there, where it says, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board, and then we have district will notify the teachers, and it continues on, the board is not struck through, so we, so I would suggest that we strike the board and then, of course, keep the district, so that it's consistent with paragraph three that I just read.
Is that the will of the board?
Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, it is my understanding, and as I reviewed this policy as well, made a note that I think that the word board was supposed to be struck through on this policy, to be consistent with the paragraph above it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I just have one other question on that paragraph. Personnel must give written acceptance, acceptance of their contracts to the superintendent. Do we need to have some date there? Is there, does there need to be some timeline to be included?
There's another policy that actually indicate staff contracts that will be forthcoming, and it actually has the deadline when professional contracts are due back in, which is before May 11. Any other questions, comments? If not, we're going to move to policy GBEBC. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Holmes?
Okay, I'm putting on the glasses so I can see. Okay, I had a concern about the, the part where it was the gifts that the, the people that work for their supervisor should, we'll refrain from gifts to the supervisor, and I'm thinking about like with bosses' day and things like that, I think it wasn't refrained before, it was discouraged before, but if you say, I think that's a little strong for the wording for that, because you're going to have, you, we talk about fostering in an environment where people want to work, so there's nothing wrong with the staff rewarding their principals with bosses' day and things of that, so that falls under that gift giving, and if you say it's not allowed, I, I kind of have a problem with that. I think the bosses, as well as the teachers, as well as the custodial staff, everybody deserves to be appreciated, because we're talking about fostering a climate of a family.
Dr. Holmes, thank you for saying that, because I had that in my notes as well. I indicated bosses' day, family emergencies.
Exactly.
About birthdays, bridal showers, birth of a child.
And if you have a baby, your principal might have a baby. I mean, y'all can't get a gift for the baby? What's the?
Any other suggestions or comments? So, Dr. Holmes, do you have a suggestion?
Yes, I would, I think that maybe, I'm not, not the wording part, but I think we need to not say we'll refrain from, I think that we'll.
If we can have, we can have Dr. Davis and his team to come up with new wording?
Yeah.
And maybe bring that back to us.
I think we need to revisit that, because I don't see anything wrong with giving gifts to your boss.
Dr. Davis, is that the will of the board first? To have Dr. Davis to go back and revisit that?
I need y'all to kick in, because y'all know that's wrong.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shad.
If we could get some guidance, some rationale as to why there's a change, because evidently we already had it in as are discouraged from doing it, but apparently, they, folks, because they want to give, they don't, they're not operating by the discouragement, so now we're suggesting putting language into saying, no, it's just going to stop.
Right.
And I understand what Dr. Holmes is saying, but what's the rationale behind this?
We would, Mr. Shad, we probably would need to reach out to the School Board Association to find out from their attorneys, or the individuals who prepared the policies for the state as to why, why that word was changed from discouraged to will refrain. I, I have my thoughts on why that's the case, but I will, I will refrain from sharing those thoughts until I know for sure.
Well, well, in that case, I'm, I would be in agreement with Dr. Holmes that it should remain as are discouraged, and just take out will refrain.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is that the will of the board? I support that as well. Board, are the board members?
I'm happy to support that as well.
Okay, thank you. And also, on the policy GBEBC, it mentioned number one, it talks about selling items for personal profit, and I just wanted to know, does that imply my Girl Scout cookies, that my colleagues can't come when their kids are selling Girl Scout cookies, and I purchased my five box of peanut butter patties?
I, I, I don't think that includes Girl Scout cookies, because it's not a personal profit situation, it's a fundraiser for the Girl Scouts of America, and so that money is turned over to Girl Scouts. Now, if you were baking your own cookies?
Don't worry. No, that's not happening. Okay.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I'm sorry, I have one more question on that policy, under the soliciting of employees, in the last sentence, employees will be, or will not be made responsible or assume responsibility for the collection of any money or distribution of any fund drive, literature within the schools without such activity, having, having the appropriate approval. Who is appropriate approval?
At the school level, it would be your principal or your supervisor.
Could we include some type of wording such as that?
Is that the will of the board? I would support that.
Excuse me, I, I would support going back to saying the superintendents, the way it was before.
And I'm fine with the superintendent as well. I was just like to have some point person there.
Yeah, I would say, I would say superintendent. Over the past years, there have been a lot of different issues in our schools, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was loud enough you could hear me without this, but I know that there have been a lot of issues within our schools over the years, I'm not sure how it is now since I've retired, but there have been a lot of issues with selling certain things at the school, some schools, and to be consistent, and to get rid of the site-based management, and everybody to be under one umbrella, leave it with the superintendent. And principals have to run it.
Dr. Holmes? Did I not see your hand? I'm sorry. You just agree, okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
The sentence immediately preceding that sentence says that the approval cannot be granted unless it's given by the superintendent or his or her designee, and it appears that that was added by the district, that's a suggested addition by the district, so I believe if you match those two sentences up, then the appropriate approval would be not only by the superintendent, but also his or her designee, which I believe Ms. Williams has stated that designation has been given to the supervisor and/or the principal locally.
That is correct. So that is the will of the board to make those corrections, adding the superintendent? Policy GBE. Madam Vice Chair, does that include his or, or his or her designee? Yes. Yes.
Right, I'm sorry, let me clarify. Superintendent is already in there, and we also have the designee already in there. So if it gets approved, then it's not limited to just the superintendent. It's also the designee as well. So there's no need to, as I understand, there's no need to add the superintendent in that second sentence.
Right. So just, okay. But that was added in the last sentence, correct? The one Mrs. Agostini referenced? Okay. Moving to policy G B E. Are there any questions or comments? Policy J R A. I have one, but I'll allow you guys to go first. Any questions, suggestions, or comments for policy J R A?
Yes.
Dr. Holmes?
I did have a question as to the part where it says the principal will, I guess, no longer notify teachers, teachers if a student has done a particular crime in their classroom. My concern here is, coming from a classroom teacher's perspective when I used to teach school, not that we want to make anybody prejudiced against anybody because something that they've done, but there are some cases where you might need to know what a child has done. For example, if a child has been arrested for being a pedophile, let's say, you, as a teacher, taking them on trips and stuff, you might need to know that, so you, if they're coming back into your classroom, you might need to know that, so you would know how to monitor a group. And that's just an extreme example. But I think that by saying that the teacher should no longer be notified at all when a student has had an arrest record, I think maybe we could clarify some situations, maybe they should be notified. There could be a situation where the child has done a violent crime, and you might need to, I mean, there's just, I just think that eliminating the teacher, the person who has the direct contact with that specific child every day for that many hours, needs to be trusted with the knowledge of who and who's in their classroom.
So, Dr. Holmes, what are you suggesting?
I don't have a wording for that at this time, but I think we need to probably revisit that a little bit, because I think it's wrong to take the teacher out of the loop. Because I know when I taught, you could tell me a child did whatever. I'm not gonna discriminate a child for anything they've done or their past history, but it is helpful to know, so you know as the classroom teacher, how to specifically deal with that particular child. That's, I mean, I just, I think there are certain situations where you might need to know. Not every situation, but I think there's specific situations where you might need to know.
Any other comments from Board members?
Madam Chair, I'm not in...
Mr. Shad.
I'm not in favor of that. I would direct the Board's attention to the fact that the part that's in yellow is by recommendation of our counsel. The recommendation that is in yellow, all the recommendations that are in yellow is from, is based on advice from our legal counsel, which includes the provision she's talking about.
Any other comments?
Okay, I'm gonna go in again. Yes, even though that might be the recommendation of the legal counsel, the Board has the autonomy to change that, because that's a recommendation. I'm coming from the perspective of a former teacher who has had a class where I taught special ed, and I had all types of students that had all kinds of major issues in my room. I taught a ED class, a EMD class, and a LD class with students that had severe behavior problems, and they were in my room with me every day. And not that I was, again, that is not to be used to beat somebody over the head with, but I needed to know if a certain child had the propensity for a specific type of behaviors. That allows me to know how to operate with them and to put them, not put them in situations that they may repeat some of the things that they have done. I think that a recommendation by a legal counsel is a difference than a recommendation by someone who's done it.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I think it's sufficient, I think it's sufficient that the principal, as the representative for the school, gets access to this information from the state agencies or the court. But to have it then go into potentially each individual teacher's classroom, what impact that teacher may have once they gain knowledge that that particular student has some criminal record that could have some consequence. If the student ever found out that the teacher was aware, I'm not sure what would happen moving forward. If the parent learned that the teacher was aware that their child had some criminal activity. Because understand too, when we're talking about juvenile cases, that is really confidential as it relates to that particular student. Whatever happens, well, of course, if there is a, if there's criminal activity, or if, because I'm a lawyer, if there's criminal activity on school grounds, teachers obviously are gonna become aware. But if it's perhaps some things that may have occurred outside the school district, but the school is informed by the court, or informed by, by a state agency, then I'm comfortable with the principal knowing and then making whatever decisions based on that information, while still keeping the confidentiality of that information with regard to that student. Because all it takes is for some other, for some teachers to just be talking about it, and that some other, some kids hear that, and what detrimental effect would that, could that possibly have on that individual student who has that right to keep that information confidential? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Caution Parker?
I think that, number one, I think that for a level playing field for a child, if something has happened, a level playing field, starting off the school year, or going to a new teacher, going to the new classroom, there needs to be absolutely nothing there that might twist the teacher's thinking, or have a teacher react differently. And everybody reacts differently to everything. But I know that teachers talk, everybody talks, everybody talks. But I do believe that for the, in the best interest of the child, that we need to leave it as it is.
Holmes?
I'm not saying that, that's why I clarified earlier. I'm not saying that every little thing that a child's done needs to be reported to the teacher so they can talk around the teacher's line. That's not where I'm going with that. I'm going with if there is a serious situation that has involved a child, and that it may have consequences within their classroom, I think that, and I like the idea, I don't have a problem with the principal knowing. And if the principal deems it necessary for the teacher to know, maybe that would break down some of that, just like you said, just wholesale saying. But if the principal deems it necessary for the running of that particular teacher's classroom, I think that that should be allowed if the principal, put it in the principal's hands, that's why we hired them, to deem it necessary to let that specific teacher know. I can think back to a situation where there was some gang activity years ago when I was teaching. And I, fortunately, they let me know about the gang activity that was going to happen, because there was a big shooting between gang members. And if I had not known that, I would have maybe put some of the same kids in the room that had the gang activity. You know, we're not trying to, I'm not a person that, we don't, I don't think we need to label children, because I think every child deserves a fresh start. I don't care what you did before, as long as what you do for me now. I've never cared that. But I do realize that there are certain situations that the classroom teacher should be made aware of. Maybe put in those specific situations in the principal's hands and letting him decide if it's pertinent. Maybe we could add that wording in there.
Any other comments? I'll just add one thing. I tend, as a former teacher myself for 15 years, I can relate to both sides. But I think in the society that we live in now, I think we need to put that in the hands of the principal, at the principal's discretion, because some teachers can't handle that type of information. And I think we have to be very careful to protect the babies that the parents send to us. So, I would be leaning more towards what Mr. Shad and Dr. Caution Parker said. I think we're not at that state of mind that we can all handle that information.
Okay, I'll concur. I just wanted to put it on the record that I thought that in certain situations, I'm gonna still say this again, not every situation, but I think there are certain situations, if the principal deems it necessary, I think that he should have the ability to talk confidentially with that teacher. And we need to rely on that teacher's professionalism to realize that that's confidential. That's all I'm saying.
And let me just add one other thing to that, Dr. Holmes, because I hear what you're saying. But I think at that point, I think the principal can go in there and just share with that teacher that, you know, Johnny and Mike doesn't need to sit together, or this person needs to sit at the front of the room, without giving the details of why, the why behind that. So I truly support that. But I think the principal, at their discretion, can have that conversation without giving out the confidential information. Okay, any other comments, questions for policy J R A? I know I had one. I want to go back to number two. And I do apologize that you guys can't see number two, so I'll read part of it for you. It says, "The principal will maintain juvenile criminal records and information. The principal will destroy such juvenile criminal records upon the juvenile's completion of secondary school or when the juvenile reaches 21 years of age, whichever occurs earlier." And my question would be, who will, whoa, let me put, Dr. Holmes' glasses back on, because I can't see. First question is, who would monitor this? When it says that the principal would do that, would the principal have something in place? Would they have a record of, you know, going back to check to see the age of the student or the month? The second question is, where would this information be stored, in permanent records? And number three, what about if the student transfers to another school, or transfers into our school?
I think I can answer, start with number three. I think student transferring into our school, it would be up to the ascending school to send the appropriate information regarding student discipline. Student discipline is normally stored in the power schools, and so that information would be shared. We don't enroll students in schools until we receive that discipline data to ensure that that student has not been expelled from the ascending school or ascending school district. As far as their juvenile records is concerned, I think this is somewhat of a new policy, so I don't know. We haven't worked that piece out, whether or not we will receive juvenile records from ascending organizations. So let's say that student was in Lexington County, and now he comes to Richland County, whether or not the Lexington County Sheriff's Department would share that information with the school district. I'm gonna go out on a limb and guess that they probably will not share that. But that's something that we'll be able to find out. And if we find that out, we can place insurance and administrative rule. As far as who would maintain or keep note of that, that would be the principal's responsibility, and the school level's responsibility to decide how they purge that information. Typically, when we receive that information, you can receive it in multiple ways. But the fact that we have SROs in our schools, that information is typically shared from one law enforcement agency to another. And there may be some record or notation on their, in certain sections of their power school, the power school database, that may identify the student had an issue, but the only certain administrators will be privy to that information. But as far as a physical record, that physical record is typically kept in the school resource offices, office, and in the student's permanent file. We would then, if there's a printout of that, we would then destroy that printout at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Now, it goes back to a question we had earlier. If that is indicated in the permanent records of a student, then that goes back to every teacher who have taught that kid or who wants to find out information, can now go back to the permanent record and see that information. And I think that's just the conversation we had earlier, that we don't want...
I don't think teachers have, teachers don't have access to students, to certain sections of the student permanent record. They can't access that information. I give you, for instance, and I could be misstated if this policy changed, but let me give you a policy that I had a question about once before when I was a principal. If a student has been diagnosed or identified as saying having HIV, that information is not shared with the school principal.
Absolutely.
It's not even shared with the teachers, it's not shared with the students, it's not shared with the school principal. The only person that knows that is the nurse.
Absolutely.
And I think, who else knows that? Me, I'm sorry. At the time, I was the superintendent. At the time, I was the principal. And I questioned that, but I understood that for confidentiality purposes, that is a very serious piece of information. So only two people in the district knows that that student has been diagnosed with that condition. So, there are some information that some people are just not, not privy to.
Any of the comments before I make a comment? Dr. Davis, unless things have changed, when I was a teacher in the district, as a teacher, we could go and get the key and go to permanent records and look at information. So, unless things have changed, and it could have been, but teachers had the right to go in and get permanent records and look at permanent records. And I think I left in 2012, so up until 2012, we were capable of doing that. So unless there are some changes that I'm not aware of.
Madam Vice Chair. Overall, the principals in the district, that's the first time I've ever heard of a teacher being able, I wish I had known that then when you were working, and I could have a conversation with that principal. But I have never heard or have ever received a question about that. It was just, it was known. They could not go into the student's permanent records. And to get a key and go to a locked, no, no. I wish I had known that then, I wish you'd reported that.
I thought it was normal.
The information that teachers need, or, and not just teachers, I think we've just focused on teachers, that any person needs related to students, they have access through technology for all the information that they need. And that technology is limited based on their clearance for information. So certain teachers have access to certain students', information regarding IEPs, whether they have a 504, what their test scores are, depending on what their access is, as well as certain information regarding student discipline, attendance, and things of that nature. So all the information that students need today is typically housed and through, accessible for that teacher through technology.
Any, Dr. Holmes?
Madam Chair, and to piggyback on what Dr. Davis is saying, that's true. And your power school administrator can have, put limitations on what specific people or group of people can access what. So that, that's easily solved, because certain people should not have access to A, B, C, D, E. The power school administrator can cut them off and give them access to only the things that they need.
Any other comments? Mr. Shad?
In that same section where you talked about the principal maintaining the juvenile records and destroying them, I would suggest, and hopefully it's the will of the Board, that where it says juvenile criminal records, that we remove the word criminal, so that it reads, "Maintain juvenile records." From a criminology standpoint, adults commit crimes, children commit offenses. And so I believe that, to paint it in this policy, inhabitant's policy, if it passes, we don't want to give the impression that the district feels that a juvenile that commits an offense is actually committing a crime. If they do commit a crime, they are tried as an adult, that's a different story. But when we're talking about juvenile records, it should, it should be listed as that. In fact, they aren't even arrested, there's actually a petition that's filed.
I can support that. What's the will of the Board?
I support that also.
Okay, yes. That's the will of the Board to make that correction. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. We're moving to 13.9 Report Rule... Rule Recruitment Initiative. And I just want to say thank you, Ms. Williams, because the last Board meeting was so long, and she was prepared to give this. And I made a motion that we table this to the next meeting itself. I will refrain from my questions.
I won't tell the conversation we had.
So thank you very much.
Okay, good, good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, Dr. Davis. Tonight, I'm gonna present on the Rule of Recruitment Initiative. It is named the Rural Teaching Recruiting Incentive Proviso, also known as the Rule of Proviso. It provides funds for one year with no carryover allowed. Funds are not available until Sarah has received the funding from the state. It provides funds for districts with high teacher turnover rates to implement certain recruitment and retention initiatives. So you asked, what is high turnover? Over a five-year period, they look an average if a district has had over, greater than 11%. I actually called, because I wanted to know where was Richland too. We were at 11... Two. We were at 11.3% over a five-year period. We say, we attribute that to Terry ending, which mean a lot of our teachers left during that time of Terry. The use of term rural is misleading, because we are now the rural district. It's more of a high teacher turnover rate. This is separate from the group of plaintiffs in the equity lawsuit and from the group of districts that have been referred to as the high poverty districts. The proviso only applies, and this is important, only applies to classroom-based teachers, not for media, speech therapists, school counselors. Incentives were first developed with input from various education entities and initial group of recipients. Here's the list of approved incentives. And you can see there where we have recruitment expenses, some website upgrades, national employment system vendor, international teacher placement costs, and so on. Some additional ones is bridge program partnerships, critical need salary stipend, professional development, travel stipend, and housing purchase renovations. So when we were identified, one of the things that I was able to do is sit down with Dr. Davis, and we looked at the areas of need for Richland Two: professional development, recruitment expenses, critical need salary stipend, certification exam support, and international teacher placement cost. As you heard a few board meetings ago, Dr. Grant and Mr. Kelly presented on the culturally relevant teaching. These funds were actually used to pay for that training. For special education, we were able to send additional staff this year to attend state and national conferences. They have met and discussed, I did not change the PowerPoint, so this is the same PowerPoint as before. So they met at the end of March to identify the most promising practices discussed at the conference, and they are gonna present and share in future district YPD. We focus heavily on our first-year teachers. We have learning communities. We brought in Ennet Bro for 50 Ways to Improve Student Behavior and provide opportunities for first-year teachers to learn about educational resources. Mr. Price actually drove them on the bus to salute the shows, and they were extremely excited because a lot of them were new to the district and new to the area. So it's important that they understand the culture of Richland Two. We are excited to be a power by Teach to Lead Summit. We are a power to Teach to Lead District. We will be hosting our first conference on June 18th through the 19th. And this is a nationally recognized model for providing teachers with time, space, and resources to translate ideas for improvement into action. Certification exam support, we are here to help develop anyone who is within the district who needs assistance with passing the Praxis and P O T. We partnered with Grand Canyon University for P O T workshop. We have been purchasing and developing the professional library for resources for Praxis Prep. And we also have a new website developed for Praxis information and resources. Recruitment expenses, if you've been driving across the county, you've probably seen some of our advertisements. And we actually have crisscrossed the state with some of our advertisements, as well as radio. If you heard, we had kids here last week for our recruitment fair. So we have heavily been hitting on recruitment. Some of the additional recruitment fairs that we attended this year is up there. You can see where we have Albany State and Anderson University, Augusta University, and Florida State, University of Georgia, University of Toledo. And currently, right now, have a set of people who are in Ohio, as well as in New York. And they are interviewing special ed teachers. Out of our additional recruitment fairs from this, we've been able to make letters of intent to employ. Right now, we have 70 that we have offered, and we have 40 people who have accepted the letters of intent to employ to come work. And we attribute that to some of the additional fairs that we were able to attend. Critical needs stipend. Special ed has been identified as our critical need area. It is our highest critical need area. We looked at our math and our science, and believe it or not, special ed actually outpaced those. Over the past five years, our district has averaged 41 teacher vacancies per year in special education. International teachers, we have 29 currently in the district. And you can see, we use E P I and Faces. They are all across the district, and they're teaching our early childhood dual-emersion Spanish, French, math, science, Spanish, and special education as well. The Future Rural Recruitment Initiative is currently in the legislature, legislature's hands, so we don't know where we're gonna be. They're currently reviewing the eligibility requirements and looking to add a poverty index, which if they add a poverty index, Richland Two may not qualify for that, or an index of taxable paying ability to, so whether the district were qualified to receive funds. Any questions? And Dr. Elkins Johnson, it was less than 18 minutes. She told me it was 18 slides. She was worried that it was gonna be 18 minutes. And I practiced today, it was five minutes and four seconds.
And Ms. Williams, thank you so much. You did an awesome job. So thank you. So I'm glad that we brought you back, see? Thank you. Awesome.
Any questions or comments?
I do have, oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Holmes? I do have one question. I applaud all the out-of-state recruitment that you've done. But just for my own reference, can you tell me some of the schools that we've tried to recruit for in-state?
Yes, ma'am. We actually hit everywhere in-state that is, often I actually have a list in some of my packets here. But we do, we are intentional about hitting every in-state recruitment fair in South Carolina that's offered.
Okay, what are some of the schools that you hit?
South Carolina State, Claflin, Benedict, we brought the Misters here on campus, New bury College, Anderson College, Clemson, USC, Francis Marion.
Winthrop.
Land, yeah, Lander. And we went to Winthrop, took a team, three people to Winthrop.
Francis Marion. And what about my alma mater, C-School at Columbia College?
Columbia College, and probably if you read your board brief, we are very aligned with Columbia College. They don't host the individual recruitment fair, but we do have a number of student teachers, and we are partnering with them, as in your board brief, with the Apex. So we're excited for that partnership.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, don't scare us anymore and have 18 slides and take five minutes. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Now, we're on item 14, Agenda Items for next meeting, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. We are bringing before you the items for, future agenda items for the April 30th, 2019 board meeting, where we will have student appeals, adult education requests, special recognitions, a legislative update. We'll be asking for the approval of the policy revisions that we cover tonight. Those will be G B A A, G B A, G B A A, G B C, G A, G B A, I'm sorry. These are, let me start over. G B A A, G B C, G A, G B A, G B B, G B E, G B E B C, and J R A. So we'll be bringing those policies back with the recommended changes to those that were suggested by the board for your approval. In addition to that, we'll bring before you the following policies for consideration. You will receive that information from my office or from Ms. Sherman. And I want to share with you what those policies will be. If you'll give me one second to pull them up. Those policies will be G B G, G B, G B G, Legal Defense of Staff, G B H, Staff Participation and Community Activities, G C B D, Professional Staff, French Benefits, G D B D, Support Staff, French Benefits, G C Q E slash G D Q C, Retirement of Professional and Support Staff, G B G A A, Medicines, and G C R D, Tutoring for Pay. In addition, we'll have a report, a discipline update report, a report from special education, as well as an update on capital improvements.
Board members, if there are any items you'd like to see listed for our next meeting, please make sure that you complete your sheet and turn it in to Dr. Davis and Tamika. Are there any questions? If we can have a motion for approval of the agenda items for next meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Manning.
I make the motion that we approve the proposed agenda for the April 30th, 2019 meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Are there any questions, comments? If not, if you would, please cast your vote. By a motion of six to zero, it passes. We didn't have anyone to sign up for public participation, number two, so we're going to move on to item number 17, Board and Superintendent Comments. I'll start to my right, Dr. Holmes.
I'd just like to say I enjoyed all the presentations tonight. And I'm tired, and it's cold in here, so you all have a very blessed evening.
Mr. Manning?
Thank you very much. I wanted to recognize Colonel McLamb, who's here with us tonight. This is his last meeting with us before he goes off to retirement, so, yeah. Colonel McLamb, we want to thank you and the fort and General Beagle for all the work you've done to help with the relationship between the district and the fort. There's a lot of great things going on there. You've been a big part of that. We appreciate it. I know you're looking forward to retirement and the many great things that come with that. So thank you so much for your time and for being part of us. Thank you. Yeah. Otherwise, y'all have a great spring break, so thank you.
Dr. Caution Parker?
Same thing both of my colleagues have said about the presentations this evening and about the Colonel here retiring. And as a military brat, wife, granddaughter, and niece, I congratulate you on your service. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Agostini?
Have a great evening.
Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentations, as always. I did want to commend our student advocates who participated in the public participation. And I would echo the sentiments to the Colonel. Thank you so much for being here. Your presence is not unnoticed. And congratulations. Thank you for your service. And I would just say that Cyclone is a great place to retire and live. Great place, great place. And Madam Chair, you did a fabulous job in the chair seat. You did a fabulous job. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board. April is the month of the military child. We will purple up for military children and wear the color purple on Friday, April the 12th. Richland Two values our connection with Fort Jackson is the nation's largest military training facility. April is also Diversity, Autism, and Alcohol Awareness Month. The Project Care Coalition has planned several activities this month to provide tips for parents on how to have conversations with young people about underage drinking. As prom approaches, the Richland County Sheriff's Department's Community Action Team is partnering with Project Care to have prom party patrols with additional officers on prom duty. Our Human Resource Department invites job seekers to two upcoming all-position career fairs, May 1st from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. and June 17th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. here at R2I2 in the Conference Center. We want to meet and talk to veteran teachers, novice teachers, and career changers wanting to become teachers. There are alternative pathways to earning teacher certification, and we want to share those with you. Additionally, Richland Two has opportunities beyond teaching, including clerical, building maintenance, bus drivers, food service, teaching assistants, substitutes, nurses, security officers, and tutoring. Visit richland2.org for more information. Again, congratulations to Ms. Libra Ruth on being named Communicator of the Year by NSPR. I would also like to congratulate Board Member Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. She has been selected as the 2019, as a 2019 honorary by the Columbia Chapter of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women and My Sister's Keeper. She is one of the, one of seven women being honored for serving our community. Congratulations, Doc. And also, a big congratulation goes out to Mr. Warren Wise, a seventh-grade science teacher at Kelly Mill Middle School. Today at the State House, he was named the inaugural, the very first South Carolina STEM Educator of the Year. Congratulations to Mr. Wise. And to all of you here and at home, have a very safe spring break. For our students who will have assignments to watch our board members, remember what Dr. Davis shares with you on his visit, read every day and play. Have a great break. Thank you.
I think everything has been shared, but I'd like to say that I want everyone to have an enjoyable and safe spring break. And I had to eat my words. As an administrator, I used to always tell my faculty and staff, don't be ready, stay ready. And tonight, with short notice, I had to stay ready. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve this evening. We don't have any information that we need to go back to discuss in Executive Session Number Two, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Shad?
I move that we adjourn the April 9th, 2019 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.